Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, April 25, 2023. I have a meeting announcements. All meetings are livestreamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will this clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
How you doing?
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. LaBelle?
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Mrs. Warwick?
Here.
Mr. Wilson? Mrs. Cale Smith, President?
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Please be seated. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved, Madam President.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. And our next order of business is proclamations. And we are joined by Mayor Ganey today for a very special pro- Mayor, do you want to come forward? I'm gonna turn it over to you. And this is the only thing Gino asked me that make sure I mention. Gino Palmasina. Yeah, he said make sure I mention.
You want to do that now?
No, after you read, after you're done.
Okay, you sure?
Yeah.
Gina's a heck of a coach. Now, you know that, right?
I know, isn't he?
Yeah.
But she's on him.
Yeah, yeah, right. Good morning, everybody. How you doing?
Morning.
Um, two things before I begin. One, I want to ask Ricky Burgess to join me up up here. This is his council district. Have him say a couple of words to the, to the team. And then, secondly, I'm gonna read the proclamation. And if it's okay with you, Council President, I'd like for them to come up here.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right. So let's, let's speak. I'll do the proclamation. We'll bring them up. Go ahead, Rick.
Come up here, please. in many ways saved my life. When most of my friends, growing up in Homewood, were doing crime, selling drugs, I, instead of doing the street life, turned toward basketball. And it was a safe place for me, and so I started playing basketball every day. I was never a great player, but after shooting a couple hundred jump shots every day for many years, you get to be all right. And so I loved the game, played a lot of it, coached a little bit of it, had a few sons, coached them, and, you know, enjoyed the game. And so we are celebrating Imani Christian Academy on the WPIAL championship. I want to congratulate the coaches, the head of school, and all of the sacrifices that these young men have made for this athletic accomplishment. As I said to them privately, and I'm going to say this publicly, I celebrate, rejoice, enjoy your ring and your trophies and your championship. But at the same time, remember that this is fleeting. No matter even if you go on to have a successful athletic career, it is still fleeting. But to focus on your education at this time in your life, your academics is your pathway to your life success. And one can be both a great scholar and a great athlete. And so we celebrate you on this end, right? We celebrate your academic achiev- your athletic achievement. I also hope to be here with you one day, and I'll be in the audience, but I hope to see you also be in the audience when you get your PhD or your, your doctorate or your undergraduate degree, or you've served in the military. I want you to put both things, and then finally, and then, because you asked me to say something, and then finally, is you got to be a good person. And for me, that means including serving a great God. So if you do that, if you excel academically and athletically, and you become a great person and serve a great God, you will have a very great, fulfilled, and successful life. And so we are thankful for this moment. Congratulations. We look forward to more accomplishments and maybe another championship next year.
Imani Christian Academy, congratulations. To me, you define what it means to be a team. You define what it means to define the odds. They didn't even have you ranked high this year, and still, because of your hard work and dedication and being able to be a student and having excellent coaches, you're here. And we honor you. Come on, y'all come forward. The President said come forward. We honor y'all today. Come on down. Can y'all clap for him? Yeah, we honor y'all. We definitely honor you. Yeah. Yeah, we honor you. Coaches, can we come up too as well, please?
Yes, sir.
Let's get it. Whereas Imani Christian Academy is a private Christian school located in East Hills of Pittsburgh, and whereas Imani Christian Academy is comprised of an elementary, middle, and high school, and whereas Imani Christian Academy's mission is to serve all students, especially the underserved, transforming them spiritually, academically, socially, and physically, and launching them into lives, lives of services and contributions. And whereas this year, the Imani Boy Basketball Team were section champions and WPIAL champions, and whereas the Imani Boys Basketball Team also won the PIAA State Championship on March 23, 2023, at the Great Center in Hershey, Pennsylvania, and whereas the mayor, city council, and residents of the city are proud to acknowledge and applaud them for the hard work and dedication that they delivered in winning the championship. So now therefore be it resolved that I, the mayor of the city of Ganey, respect or proud, and I just don't know what to say because this is your day. This is your day. And for every kid out there that can hear my voice, please listen to me. This is what hard work and dedication looks like. I don't care where you come from, what they say about you, how they want to criticize you, whatever. At the end of the day, if you put in the work, you become a champion too. And today, Imani Christian Academy, they are champions because they were willing to put the work in to become the greatest that they could become. And for that, I ask all to rise and congratulate the champions of Imani Christian Academy for being the basketball state champions this year. So we're gonna do it no stop. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. You're the President.
I'm gonna take one with this. I haven't explained it. My son's over six foot. Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved.
Call a couple up?
Yes, please.
So I want to call one of the coaches, well, there's two. The principal, the coach, and the player to come speak, please.
Can I just, I just want to add real quickly that Gino Palmasina pointed out to me that sophomore RJ Sledge, first player in the WPIAL history to win back-to-back state championships with two different schools, one Bishop Cameron in '22, and today Imani Christian in '23.
Come on. Who's gonna speak first?
I'll be brief. This is about the kids today. I'm Omar Foster, the head coach of Imani Christian Academy. Just very, very proud to say that these kids put in a whole bunch of work, you know, a whole lot of dedication. And they, they had goals, and they set goals, and they achieved their goals, you know. There was a lot that was asked for them to be successful this year, and everything that we asked them to do, they done it. This is an amazing group of kids. Amazing. And what's, what I'm very, very proud of is all of these kids have worked really, really hard, not only on the basketball court, but in the classroom. You know, these kids are 3.0 grades, most of them on high honor roll, very bright, very intelligent. They love to correct me even. So, great group of kids. I couldn't be more proud to coach these kids. And I'm gonna let one of my kids, who has been here the longest, speak next.
Come on, Avery. Avery Wesley.
My name is Avery Wesley. I've been here a long time. It's finally a relief that we get to be able to win this championship with my guys that I've been with for a long time. It's just unbelievable. I just want to thank God for this opportunity. Academics is just, you just gotta be a good scholar and a good student, but overall, had a good year.
All right.
All right.
Good morning. Paul Lewin Zombie, head of school for Imani Christian Academy. First and foremost, I want to thank God for the opportunity to be here today because without Him, none of this would be possible. Secondly, I want to thank City Council and certainly the mayor for taking note of the extraordinary achievement of this fine group of young men. Hundreds of teams entered that competition, all with the same aspiration of becoming victorious, of becoming champions. Today, we stand before you as those champions, and we are grateful. What makes this victory, in some respects, even more sweet than the opportunity to carry a trophy or the opportunity to raise our hands in victory, is the fact that these young men come from an area of the city that is by and large forgotten. They have overcome all manner of adversity to be here, whether it be economic, whether it be personal, whether it be financial, whether it be familial, whatever has stood in their way, they have managed to either get over it, get around it, underneath it, or through it to arrive here in this day. And for that, they should be applauded.
That's right.
Comparatively speaking, if you look at the total number of students that Imani Christian Academy has, and the number of students in other schools, this feat would not be possible. So to them go the honors, to them go the commendations for the hard work, not only on the court, because at Imani, we are very clear that we are competing on more than one field of competition. Certainly, there is the court, but there is also the classroom. And in both endeavors, these young men, men, have excelled. And so I am proud of the fact that they are extraordinarily well-rounded, that they are disciplined, that they are hardworking, that they represent, in fact, the very best of who we are. And so we thank you for the opportunity to share our success today. We thank you for taking the time to shine the light on them and their accomplishment today. For we live in a world where all too often, the positive that is achieved, the greatness that is attained, the commendable that should be lauded, goes by too quickly. So thank you for this day and this opportunity.
So again, I just want to thank City Council. I want to thank Imani for coming down. Appreciate you. Council President, you mind if we take some photos?
You want to take some photos?
Yeah, so if we could get some people to stand in the front, you know, usually if you under like, well, all y'all tall, so usually if you under like 5'8", 5'9", usually we say 5'4", but so y'all got some height, so we gonna say anybody under, anybody under 5'8". Can you stand in the front?
Do all the members want to please come forward?
They might not have heard that.
Members, please come forward.
You know, you already know.
How many, how tall are you?
6'7".
I'm 4'10".
Yeah.
My mother's smaller than me.
Yeah, but you, yeah. Stay there, Councilwoman.
No, I want you to get in front.
My cousin came out in 94.
Mayor.
Okay, who's your dad?
Gerald.
Gerald who? Hold on.
I'm gonna show you size.
Hold on, let me see. Can y'all see Council, can y'all see the Council President?
I'm good, I'm good.
Can y'all see the Council President?
No, we can't.
Can y'all see the Council President? Yeah, go right in the middle of there.
I'm good, I'm good.
No, 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 Council President.
The traffic will block my.
No, no.
Council, if you can move to the stage, move to the center there, and then we can see perfectly.
Well, I don't have to block the mayor.
Wonderful.
You're good. You, you, trust me, I can just go.
All right. Well, look here in the center.
On three, Imani. One, two, three. Imani!
Perfect, got it.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody ready?
proud. Thank you.
Where, where? Okay, okay, I thought you were saying fifth.
RJ. I just want to say, this is RJ that Gino spoke about too. Say hi.
Hello.
Yeah. And thank you, Brother Melvin, for always doing so. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for making Pittsburgh proud.
Good looking kids, man.
Good to see you.
See, I want to, I want to, I want to. You know about the mighty Pink Buds, right? I know for sure, man. I know for sure. I know for sure. I know for sure. I know for sure. I got that. Me.
Him when he said how short.
Who has the second prock? Cale Smith. Is yours, Madam President, is yours presented?
Yes, no, it's to be read.
Right.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you help read the, I have one prock to be presented, or to be read. Could you read that, please?
Yes. Council President Cale Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, April 28, 2023 to be USS Requiem Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
And a motion to approve in a second.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Now, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern or official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen? Is Naomi online? Yes. Thank you. Naomi Mullen?
I honor my husband, who was a City of Pittsburgh public servant from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals. In Bon Air, this is for you, Michael. Here's the situation. One, an excellent school was closed. Two, the building has become a threat and detrimental harm. Three, it should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. Four, it must be torn down. Five, parks and trees Pittsburgh funds used to make it a green space. Six, the residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes for a detriment? The Pennsylvania Constitution is titled the Declaration of Rights. The entire article is concerned with establishing the principle that the people are the sovereign, not the state, which would include municipalities and school boards. They are not the sovereign. They shall not harm the people or will be held accountable. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid government. The City Controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the Controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. It is no wonder that issues with the school district persist. Taxes and balances don't exist when the same person is the controller for the city and Pittsburgh Public Schools. Is that a conflict of interest? When the same person moves on to work for the county, they still oversee county property. The Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of Bon Air. Michael J. Mullen Reflection by Douglas Praskovich, Battalion Chief. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly, but also energetically, his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve us citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, friend, and neighbor. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described.
Thank you, Naomi. And our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Souver, Reykjavik, Iceland. I am a Global Intelligence Society U.S. National Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. A concern that I and the GIS share with Pittsburgh City Council and city councils across the United States is the security of the vote, which I think is the core of U.S. constitutional exercise of freedom of speech in Amendment 1 by a citizen. Yet no council, including this one, rejects non-vote-by-voter verification of for whom a citizen voted. We view this as the black hole of U.S. Republican democracy nationwide, and it also exists worldwide. We have almost, on this axis, no democracy at all. Vote verification that a citizen voted is a Pennsylvania State Allegheny County Election Division action. PAAC and the other 66 PA counties will allow a citizen to verify that she, he voted. I have a letter of 13 February 2023 to that effect. But the Pennsylvania ACED bars us Pittsburghers from verifying for whom. RLM Pittsburgh Council PC, 26 April 2022. Vote-by-voter verification FW, copyright RLM GIS 2020 to 2023, stresses a for-whom check as the United States Constitution Amendment 1 free speech right, requiring the ACED and more than 3,200 U.S. county equivalents to allow a citizen to determine if his or her vote has been fatally lost, or his or her vote for A has been fraudulently misassigned to B. Ganey doesn't know that. Neither do any of you. Vote-by-voter verification overview, Pittsburgh City Council Public Comment PCCPC by RLM, 12 November 2014. VVVFW Anti-Machine Pro-Paper Ballot, RLM PCCPC, 2 November 2016. VVVFW Truth Value of Vote is undermined by electronic voting recording systems, including in Allegheny County. RLM PCCPC, 16 July 2019. VVVFW Anti-Old, now being used. No individual vote check protocols or procedures. RLM PCCPC, 7 September 2021. And also, yes to that. We have a big problem that we need to solve.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to address City Council? Is there anyone in chambers wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium.
But you're in a suit.
Good morning, Bernadette.
Good morning. Okay, where am I? Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. Last time I spoke about people coming down the Wrong Way section of Tonopah. I went up there and I asked a couple of people to do it in their cars. The problem area is from Crosby up to Tonopah on Realty. It comes up and it, and then your car ends up in this direction. So you really may not see, it's a triangular intersection. It's an extreme sharp left to come down Tonopah. Very simply, no left turn sign. Could probably solve this. It's still happening, even though the construction has started, stopped. So that's one. I did some research. Mr. O'Connor from Squirrel Hill, they had some issues with curb cuts that was in the news. And I understand, you know, people do it for a long time. The problem is on Broadway, we have a mixture of residential and businesses where some people have made their own curb cuts. And I'm asking that a database be created. I mean, we can look up wills. I looked up my great-great-grandmother's criminal record from having an affair. If you can look all that up, we should be able to have a database of curb cuts to know if, in fact, somebody has a legal curb cut or a legal driveway, because the parking issues are just outrageous. Lamar, the signage people, there are several of them on Broadway Avenue. I've called them. I was up there and I noticed they're ripping down their signage and just throwing it over the hillsides. I have called them. I've given them the addresses of each one of their signage, and all they do is pal dirt on top of it. And it's, I don't know if it's a city parklet where the little benches are, but I also have to question, are these ever going to break down? I mean, it's, it's a mess. And I don't think they should be able to just throw these torn-down signage. I mean, is there a chemical leakage? Is this proper for the environment? But they need to come out. If that is, in fact, their property, and we're placing chairs, benches for people to sit at, who wants to sit there and get their feet caught in this shredded signage that's underneath their footing? Could also be a fall risk. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernadette. You done? Okay, thank you, Bernadette. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Paul Jesus Christ Harris. Like I told you in the beginning, I was murdered on December 22, 2018, two months after the Tree of Life murders. So God sent me back with the Word, the God of justice. If you kill, you will be killed. If you steal, you will be stolen from. That's the way the Bible goes. And then the Book of Law. Let me see where it's at. There it is. And this fifth Book of Moses, the second look at the law. And this, uh, Fifth Book of Moses, the second look at the law. The second look at the law is there's no more racism, no more antisemitism, none of that. So anybody that feels like, uh, they can live like that without God, you don't got a chance. Everything revolves around God. He sent me back to give you the message. It's the book of life, the book of redemption from corruptible to incorruptible. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman Burgess. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Oh, you guys?
I do, I'm sorry.
You had a paper?
I put in the wrong place.
Okay, thank, sorry. Councilman Burgess is Chair Committee on Human Resources, please.
Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill fourteen-fifty-two, Resolution Providing that the City of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with Talogy Inc. for professional services in connection with Talogy Inc. for firefighter recruit testing reports and job analysis and providing for payment of the cost thereof, cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty dollars over three years.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill fourteen-fifty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into relevant agreements or execute required purchase orders with Corrections Development, Inc. for support and maintenance of integration of the Allegheny County Court Scheduling Module into the In-Time Systems to include a one-time fee for development implementation, configuration, training, and application design meetings of twenty thousand dollars and annual maintenance fees of five thousand dollars at a total cost not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. And Bill fourteen-fifty-four, Resolution Amending Resolution one oh nine of twenty-twenty-three, which authorized a cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment and accessories, equipment support, infrastructure, and professional services for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the total spend by nine hundred thousand dollars for a new not-to-exceed amount of ten million, three hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross presents Bill fourteen-fifty-five, Resolution Providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents for the first installment of two, twenty-twenty-three Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission dues.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Madam Clerk.
Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill fourteen-fifty-six, Resolution Providing for an agreement or agreements with H.W. Lochner, Inc. for costs associated with the preliminary design phases of both Heron Avenue Bridge and Elizabeth Street Bridge, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed eight hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and eighty cents. Bill fourteen-fifty-seven, Resolution Providing for an agreement or agreements with Mackin Engineering and Consultants for costs associated with construction inspection and contract administration for the critical sidewalks, gaps, and Sylvan Avenue projects, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed four hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars and eight cents. Also, Bill fourteen-fifty-eight, Resolution Providing for an agreement or agreements with Allegheny Valley Railroad Company for costs associated with preliminary engineering for the Swinburne Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed ten thousand dollars federally reimbursable at ninety-five percent. And Bill fourteen-fifty-nine, Resolution Providing for an agreement or agreements with Allegheny Valley Railroad Company for costs associated with preliminary engineering for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed ten thousand dollars federally reimbursable at ninety-five percent.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle presents Bill fourteen-sixty, Resolution Providing, Resolution Amending Resolution Number seven forty-six, further amending Resolution Number seven twenty-eight of twenty-twenty-two entitled, "Resolution Authorizing Appropriations, Salaries, and Capital Expenditures of the Parks Trust Fund for the Twenty-Twenty-Three Fiscal Year Beginning January first, twenty-twenty-three," by updating the transfer from the Parks Trust Fund to the Twenty-Twenty-Three Capital Budget.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Madam President. Excuse me, sorry, I just wanted to jump in, is there? Oh, I thought Bobby Wilson was next, never mind.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
That's good, thank you. And, thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Yeah, no, no new papers.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilman Wilson. Thank you.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill fourteen-sixty-one, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Department of Finance, and the Director of the Department of Public Works, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to enter into an agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company, granting it a permanent utility easement for the erection, installation, use, operation, maintenance, repair, and removal of an underground system consisting of cables, wires, transformer, and other fixtures and apparatus thereto belonging upon, over, under, along, across, and through city property located in Allegheny Commons West Park, having parcel ID eight B one fifty, and fronting on Arch Street, situated in the Twenty-second Ward, City of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, for the purpose of providing electrical services in Allegheny Commons.
Thank you. Is, can I have a motion to waive Rule Eight on Bill fourteen-sixty-one, please?
So moved.
Yes, so moved.
Second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, everyone. And myself, Chair of Hearings and Policy, I have no new papers, and we'll now move on to any unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished businesses before City Council? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is reports of committee for final action. We'll begin with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Councilman Lavelle. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle presents Bill fourteen-fifty, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill thirteen-ninety, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Two Warrants Totalling One Hundred Fifty Thousand Dollars in Settlement of a Case Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. And Bill fourteen-oh-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Reichinger Comer &amp; Miller LLC for Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed Fifteen Thousand, Six Hundred Eighty-three Dollars and Ninety-Cents.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, we'll vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson? Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill fourteen-fifty-one, Report of the Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill fourteen-oh-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with GOMARD for the purchase of specialized medical training mannequins at a total cost not to exceed one hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, we'll vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mrs. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bills haven't, the bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions. And Councilwoman Gross, we have, you have a small game of chance? Do you want to read it, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill fourteen-sixty-two, Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby recognize the Polish Hills Civic Association to be a civic and/or service organization within the context of the Pennsylvania Small Games of Chance Act as amended.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve? Second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, Councilwoman?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's approved. And now we'll move on to our meeting announcements. This afternoon, with sessions at one and one-thirty, Council will hold a briefing as it relates to the tri-party cooperation agreement. Tomorrow, Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, Council Standing Committee's meeting is scheduled for ten a.m. here in chamber. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the signup form on the Council Meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. Speaker registration will close at nine a.m. tomorrow morning. On Thursday, April twenty-seventh, at one-thirty p.m., Council will hold a pre-agenda interviews for the Planning Commission and the Civic Design Committee chaired by Reverend Burgess. Is there anything for members? Councilman Lavelle.
Yeah, very briefly. About approximately a week ago, the Hill District Choice Neighborhood Application was shortlisted by HUD. We were one of eight that were shortlisted across the country. HUD will be making a site visit next Tuesday, May second, of which I have to be a participant, as they come and view the site and we present our plans to them, which is why I will not be in council next Tuesday. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything else from members?
Oh, yeah, I guess since, actually, next Tuesday as well, I'm going to, I hope to be there, but there is a hearing for a property in my district that's been very contentious with the neighbors. It's gonna be, you know, with the magistrate, and it's just been a very contentious, the hearing is at ten. I'm gonna try and stop in for the first fifteen minutes. I'll try to come, you know, be here afterwards, but it's something I feel like I need to be at.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from members? With that said, I have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.